This is Brian Waller, zoning board of appeals chairman. As a preliminary matter, we'll start by making sure that our remote member can hear and be heard. Ms. Biswas?
Yes, I'm Claire.
Thank you. Congratulations on your reappointment.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry for being a little late. Had to reset my router.
Blame it on the cat.
So it is 7:05 PM. This open meeting of the Grafton zoning board of appeals is being conducted both remotely and in person, consistent with chapter 22 of the acts of 2022 extending, which extends remote meeting protocols through March 31st, 2023, and actually beyond that. This meeting is convened via Zoom video conference and in person as posted on the meeting agenda, which can be found on the town of Grafton website. Please see the meeting agenda for details on how to participate remotely. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. All participation within this meeting will be visible to others. Accordingly, please be aware that other people may be able to see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording of this meeting and that the recording may be published or rebroadcast at a later date. This meeting may feature public comment. For anyone that is attending virtually, if you would like to request acknowledgement to speak, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The meeting administrator will enable you to speak when it's your turn. For those on the phone exclusively, the AV staff will coordinate with the meeting administrator to allow you to speak. For those in person, we'll ask you to step up to the podium to speak. And for all speakers, please state your name and address prior to your comments or questions. And each vote taken this evening will be done by a roll called vote. So our first case this evening is case number 896, 145 Milbury Street, requesting a special permit. Ms. Reed, read the legal notice into the record.
Yes. The Grafton Board of Appeals has received a petition from Mark and Kelly Benoit for 145 Milbury Street, requesting that the zoning board of appeals grant a special permit to allow the addition of an eight-foot, eight-foot, three-inch deck off the rear of a pre-existing non-conforming structure in a pre-existing non-conforming lot, where the deck will be seven feet from the side lot line where 15 feet is required. The board will conduct a public hearing on 6/14/2023 at 7:00 PM in conference room A. Any person wishing to be heard in conjunction with this request shall appear at the time and place designated or by letter to this board in time to be read at the hearing. The April 20, this meeting may access either in person or via Zoom. The zoning board of appeals, Brian Waller, Bill McCusker, Kay Reed, Bill Yeomans, Peter Adams, Jiffy Thomas, and Matali Biswas.
All right. So, so could the applicants please introduce themselves for the record?
Hi, Kelly Benoit, 145 Milbury Street.
Mark Benoit, 145 Milbury Street.
John Morrow, 54 Plaza Street, architect.
Thank you. So, the way we'll proceed this evening is that the clerk will read the petition, which has happened. The petitioner will have 15 minutes to present. The petitioner shall present. The required information and all comments should be specific. Any opposition will also have 15 minutes to speak. These time limits may be extended with consent of the board. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to the petition will then have an opportunity to do so. Letters received. If you wish to speak, state your name and address for the record. The board may ask questions time to time. However, all conversations should be directed through the chair. After all evidence is presented, the board will enter into discussion and render a decision through a roll called vote. At any time during this hearing and prior to a decision being made by the board, the petitioner has the option to request that the petition be withdrawn without prejudice or continue to a later date, at which time the petitioner could provide additional information favorable to the petitioner. So with that, we will turn it over to the petitioner.
Thank you. The Benoit's came to me with a request for an addition to the rear of their home to provide additional living space, kitchen area, more of the family side of the house. After getting into it, they do border wetlands, and they went before conservation to get an approval, make sure that our addition wasn't encroaching into any of the setbacks. Their protection overlay is all taken care of. At that time, when that survey was done, we noticed that the house was extremely close to the left property line when you're looking at the house from Milbury Street. Subsequently, I had done the preliminary and final drawings for the addition, which they needed for the conservation application. And after that, we had determined that we needed a survey to show where the proposed addition and deck were going. And at that point, we found that the side yard setback of 15 feet was not met. But the existing house, the corner of the garage along that border, is seven feet from the property line. And our proposed stair, which goes off the deck on an angle, is approximately the same offset, seven feet from the property line. The stair is approximately four feet wide, so we have enough room to move things like deck furniture and things to store down below. We're just looking to see if we can get a special permit to move ahead with the project. If anybody has any specific questions?
Is there any comments from the board? Questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So I'm assuming that this location was the only place you felt like was the best way to put it. It couldn't be on the other side of the house, so you wouldn't be that close to that side lot line.
Yeah, the other end of the house are the bedrooms and bathroom.
Okay.
And the kitchen was what the main priority was, to get a good functional kitchen with additional living space.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair, Mr. McCusker. So I'm looking at this, I guess it's this plot plan. The current house is 7.1 feet off the side yard line?
Yes. That's the garage.
Okay. And the proposed deck is going to be 7.0, so actually 0.1 foot closer.
0.1 foot closer, okay. Yep.
Okay. Now, to Mr. Berger. We've been through this.
We have, and they changed.
A few times, I think.
A few times. So in 2014, well, first of all, has everybody had a chance to read my zoning determination? Okay. So, in my opinion, this is a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Definitely.
All right. Therefore, it needs a special permit to be extended, altered, or changed.
Right.
2014, the court said, if you're going to increase the non-conformity, you also need a variance.
Right.
2019, they said, that's ridiculous. We can't do that. So they struck that.
Okay.
So now, my opinion, and most of the zoning enforcement officers out in the Commonwealth are now saying, this only needs a special permit, not a variance also.
Just making sure. Okay. All right. So the 7.1 feet off the side yard, you know, combined with the smaller lot and lack of frontage, you know, I agree, it's definitely a non-conforming structure. Other than that, I don't have any other questions. I think this is very straightforward.
Would they need a special permit if it was 6.9 feet?
They would need a special permit if it was less than 15 feet. Under 3424, I think, I don't remember that number. I put in a zoning bylaw, if the addition now meets today's standards on a pre-existing non-conforming, I can grant that permit. But because they're not meeting that 15 feet under 3435, we have no choice but to send them here, because they are altering, and there is no yardstick to say, you're going to be fine now. That's why this is the extra exercise that they have no choice but to go through.
Any other questions from the board or comments?
I don't have any questions. I agree with Mr. McCusker's observations.
Is there any comment from the public? Anyone in the audience online?
Nope, nobody online.
Mr. Chair, just one other question.
Mr. McCusker.
How many bedrooms and baths in the house?
Currently?
Yeah.
Three bedrooms, one bath.
Any change planned for that? Not that it's relevant, but...
To the bedrooms, no. We're hoping to be able to fit a half-bath into the addition.
It should be in the packet there, Mr. McCusker.
Right. Just trying to save a little time, that's all.
He's just asking questions so he can fill out the things for me to write the decision.
All right. It's a residential use house. You don't plan to change that in any way? It's still going to be a house when that gets put on?
No. This is a family home.
Yep, okay. So that's eight, nine, 10. So I'm just going to say that's based on... And this is not in the WSPOD. It's not checked on the...
No, it is not.
So it's on the WS, so all that goes away. All right. I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. And for this case, Mr. Adams is not here tonight. We're going to appoint Jiffy Thomas as a voting member this evening, or for this case, I should say.
Give him a sign. Where'd the legal go?
All right. So at this time, I entertain a motion.
Close the public hearing.
To close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Public hearing's closed.
Congratulations.
And I entertain a motion on the special permit itself.
Yep. Just before I do a motion, though, just a quick review of the findings, make sure we're all, I actually should have done this before I close the public hearing. But anyways, finding F1 would be the structure's built in 1962. F2, the parcel's located in the R40 zoning district. Function 3, the R40 zoning district requires 140 feet of frontage. The parcel, finding F4, is the parcel is 134.29 feet of frontage. F5, the R40 zoning requires 40,000 square foot lot. F6, the structure's located on a 36,650 square foot lot. F7, the R40 zone requires a 15-foot side yard setback, and the structure's located 7.1 feet off the side yard setback. Based on findings F1 through F7, the current structure is a pre-existing non-conforming structure. F8, the current use is a residence. F9, the current home is three bedrooms, one bath. The proposed home is a three-bedroom, two-bath home. Finding 10, F10, the neighborhood consists primarily of residential structures. Based on findings F8 through F10, the proposed addition is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. So those would be the findings. So based on that, I make a motion that essentially is the legal notice, that the Grafton Board of Appeals grant a special permit to Mark and Kelly Benoit, or Benoit?
Either way.
I like Benoit.
You know, usually if you say Benoit, then somebody knows.
I still live in New Orleans, so that's why it was Benoit to me.
So the special permit to Mark and Kelly Benoit, 145 Milbury Street, request a special permit to Mark and Kelly Benoit, 145 Milbury Street, to allow construction, to allow addition of an 8.3-foot deck off the rear of a pre-existing non-conforming structure. And I'm just going to say period there.
So move.
Second.
Oh, so as depicted in Exhibit A, which is the site plan, right?
Yep. I already got him to sign it.
So as depicted in, so one more time, it's a grant, the zoning board of appeals grants a special permit to Mark and Kelly Benoit, 145 Milbury Street, to allow the construction, to allow the addition of an 8.3-foot deck off the rear of a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Okay. So I think we have a motion. I think we have a second.
Yep.
Motion made and seconded. Roll called vote. Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. The special permit's granted for case number 896, 145 Milbury Street.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Good luck. So the way it works is I have 14 days to get the decision typed up and get them to sign it and file it with the town park. There's a 20-day appeal period. After the 21st day, you come pick up the certificate of no appeal, file it with the Worcester Registry Deeds, and bring a copy to me. At that point, if everything's in and it's been approved, Bob will give you your building permit.
Well, I still have to do their review.
Well, we're talking four weeks. You're at four weeks.
Thank you.
We're good. Thank you. Good night.
Thanks.
This is this one.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
I think he's a cop. I think he's a cop.
Yes, the father's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what you just granted was for the deck, but the addition made it.
The addition made the setback.
The addition was 15 feet.
The deck is not.
Got it, got it, got it.
Which is, that's what we needed, because the deck was the only thing that was in violation.
Yeah.
All right. So the next case on the agenda is case number 897, 23 Elm Rock Drive, seeking a variance. And for this case, appoint Matali Biswas as a voting member.
Okay.
The applicant, please introduce themselves.
Oh, sure. My name's Adam Davidoff. I am the owner of 23 Elm Rock Drive, North Grafton, Mass. This is Kevin Moriarty. My builder. Oh, I thought you had to read the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. Please read, please read the...
Thank you. The Grafton Board of Appeals has received a petition from Adam and Peggy Davidoff, 23 Elm Rock Drive, requesting that the zoning board of appeals grant a variance to allow fourth bedroom on a home constructed under a chapter 40B comprehensive permit that limits the number of bedrooms. The board will conduct a public hearing on June 14th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in conference room A. Any person wishing to be heard in conjunction with this request should appear at the time and place designated or by letter to this board in time to be read at the hearing. This meeting will be hybrid and conducted in person, in person and remotely. Zoning Board of Appeals, Brian Waller, Bill McCusker, Kay Reed, Bill Yeomans, Peter Adams, Jiffy Thomas, and Matali Biswas.
Okay. Turn it over to the app.
Cool. So actually, I think my neighbor wants to be on too, but maybe you can't see his picture.
But he's dialed in.
Oh, okay, perfect.
He's not an intended, he's a panelist.
Got it, got it.
Wouldn't need to be, I can.
Okay. No worries. So we built this house during COVID-2020. We were given the option at the time to finish the fourth bedroom, and we were told during the process that if we did not do it then, we could do it later. So currently, there is an unfinished space in the house that's inside the structure that we would like to finish. If you look at the packet, I'm sure you have, there's two designs, same house. One says fourth bedroom, bedroom four. One says unfinished, so we'd like to finish it, finish it off. Just as a fourth bedroom. My parents are 80. They want to visit the grandchildren, you know, once in a while. I need a place for them to sleep, other than on an air mattress. I also did some research, Kevin did some research, and if you want to copy it, can I?
Yeah, please.
I hope nobody will copy this.
Just make sure Katrina gets one.
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't make enough.
So this is according to this part one, title, what is that, seven, chapter four, chapter 40A, section three. If you go to the third page, it says, "No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall regulate or restrict the interior area of a single-family residential building, nor shall any such ordinance or bylaw prohibit, regulate, or restrict the use of land or structures for religious purposes." It goes on and on. So I just, really just want to get a variance so we can finish the space, so I can have a fourth bedroom in my house.
Can I add one thing? At present, they have literally a sheet of construction plywood nailed on the wall, and a finished home on their second floor. And that was one of the first things I saw. I was like, this, we've got to try to change this. So that's why we're here. We're trying to do everything according to HOIL, and we're asking to be able to finish that fourth bedroom that already exists in the home. The windows are there. It just needs the floor, perhaps a closet, and a door. Basically it. So we're asking permission to do just that. Right now, I don't think it meets insulation code. I don't think it meets, I don't think it would pass a new blower door test. But I just think it would behoove them to have that space available. It is within the home. It's not like adding on or anything like that. So we're just trying to finish that existing space.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Mr. McCusker?
All right. So the issue here is, you know, this whole development was built under chapter 40B.
Sure.
So a comprehensive permit was issued, and I think that comprehensive permit actually was a part of your deed, but certainly some component of it should be in your deed, very clear, is 40B development. And the 40B development really becomes the zoning bylaw for that development.
Sure.
Okay? Waivers are granted, concessions are made, et cetera, to really kind of redefine that parcel of land to allow the development of that, that development, right? Higher density, longer loop road, et cetera. That normally wouldn't be allowed. Part of that, I believe, part of that permit, I believe, specified X number of units, X number of bedrooms.
So we changed, so originally that house was going to be a four-bedroom. We changed it, that we were only going to pay, because I didn't want to pay the $28,000 extra to the builder to finish it off at the time. So we were told by the builder, we can cut this right now, and then at a later date, go ahead and build it and finish it. This is not, my house is not a 40B house.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is. All are.
The project.
You're saying it's not affordable, but that doesn't matter. That's irrelevant.
Fine, no problem.
That's irrelevant. That's irrelevant.
Okay, no worries.
All right. We'd be having the same conversation if it was affordable or not.
Got it, got it. Okay. That's good to know, actually.
Yeah. They're all, they're all, they're all built under 40B. So let me finish. I believe, and it may mean going back into the permit, I believe that the permit says something along the lines of X number of buildings, X number of three bedrooms, X number of four bedrooms.
Sure.
Okay? And that would give you a total number of bedrooms.
Yeah.
For the project. And that may or may not have been important at the time the development was being, the comprehensive permit was being defined, but the bottom line is a comprehensive permit says X number of bedrooms, essentially says, implicitly says, it's really kind of explicit, this is how many bedrooms this comprehensive permit's allowing. So if your unit was going to be, I understand the plan allows for either three or four bedrooms, right? Three bedrooms and a bonus space, or, right?
Yeah.
So if Eastland turned around and said, well, all right, this guy's only getting three bedrooms, and now I can take this other one that was going to be three and make it four.
Right.
Then we're at maximum number of bedrooms.
Well, how do you know that?
I don't know. I don't know how we figure that out. And I think, I don't, I don't know. And I don't know, so now I'm going to kind of throw it back a little bit to Bob, and do we, do we have a breakdown of what was built and what was in the permit?
We have, we do know how many bedrooms are in each permit. We know that.
We'd have to just...
We just haven't, we haven't added any of that.
Yeah, you got to tie it.
But we have it.
Yep.
We have that information. And the only information that I have right now is, is in my zoning determination, original submission styles. And then they changed styles from John Morrow, who's in the audience, to this Eastland Partners.
Yep.
And I don't have an updated original submission with six styles.
Do, okay, that's, and actually, looking at that, that doesn't give you new numbers.
It gives me just styles.
Just styles.
Yeah.
Not numbers of units.
Isn't there a building permit for that specific?
Three bedrooms.
It was three bedrooms.
Which it would be, because that's what he said he wanted.
Right.
That's what I said, yeah.
By the way, these are on sewer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think we need to take a step even further back. I said the comprehensive permit says X number of three bedrooms, X number of four bedrooms. I wonder if it actually says that.
It doesn't.
If it doesn't, then I don't think he needs a variance. I don't think he needs to be here.
Well, look, we have the language here.
Oh, okay.
All right. In my zoning determination, we have the language according to section 8.10. I mean, 8.10. Why did you say ah?
Well, no, I think that's pretty clear. No additional housing units or bedrooms or any other structures or infrastructure, except that which is shown on the approved plan shall be created without further approval of ZBA in the form of going to this decision pursuant to jail and blow. He can't amend this.
No, but it was in there, so I, it was in there for a footnote, so I threw the footnote in. So this is where, this is where I am, because this is like Hilltop Farms. Hilltop Farms says no extra bedrooms. That's it. We're done, except if you're on that list.
And High Point.
Do the approved plans specify numbers of bedrooms?
Hillpoint does, or...
Hilltop.
Hilltop does.
And High Point does.
And High Point does. Here, he has the Brigham with, either it's the four or it's not the four. So that's when I threw my hands up and said, you know, this is going to have to go to the board, for the board to make that decision. And I did talk to our council about this, and with the fast overview that we went with this, yes, variance is the proper path. But we didn't get into, you know, does all the other documentation actually specify you're allowed to have 72 bedrooms? I just threw that in.
Yeah, right.
So I think we're still, I'm standing behind this right now until somebody says, no, you're, you're not, you're not right. But it just says here, no extra bedrooms.
So here's the problem. Okay? You're not going to qualify for a variance. A variance is something that's extremely hard to get. It's really intended for very unique situations. You know, the law is very explicit about what is required to get a variance. There's three different things. You have to meet all of them, you know, one of which is a hardship. What's, what would the hardship be? You know, that you can't have a bedroom, but that's what you bought. You bought a three-bedroom. So, you know, the variance is extreme. I don't think you qualify for a variance. And this board has to be very careful. We can't grant a variance where you don't meet the requirements, right? We can't do that, right? The law's clear on it, and then, you know, if we do that for one, we, you know, you end up having to do it for others. So I think we really need to make sure, you know, is the, is the comprehensive permit really saying that you can't have any more bedrooms? And I don't suppose you have anything from Eastland saying that that shouldn't, no. Nope. Okay. No additional housing units or bedrooms, or any other structures or infrastructure, except that which is shown on the approved plans. So I, you know, I think somebody really needs to look at the approved plans, not the ass builds. It's the approved plans.
You have them. In my decision, go past John, go to Eastland. These are the approved plans. This is where, this is where it gets gray.
Yeah, okay.
Because you have two styles of Brigham. One with the fourth, one with not the fourth.
But it's not, it's not the fourth with the fourth closed off, is it?
Yeah.
Without...
Absolutely.
I mean, that's what they have, but...
It's on the plan with the fourth closed off with only a three-bedroom.
But if he had a four-bedroom on his plan, and there's just a wall there...
No, on his plan, it's the fourth without, with unfinished.
Right.
So if they're doing that for a count, for a particular count, because they're, they're only allowed to have so many?
No, it was, but that's not true.
But we don't know.
I changed that at the... I changed that at the last minute to save thirty thousand dollars. So that's my, this is where I'm gonna get a little upset here. You're telling me that my house that I own, that I put down five hundred thousand dollars on, I can't put a fourth bedroom in my house? I can't put sheetrock, a floor and a door up?
Well, I don't think we're saying that yet. We're saying we, we wouldn't be, well, no.
Mr. McCausser is and also Bob is.
That's not, we're saying so far
Okay.
that a variance isn't the right mechanism to do this. And it's not something that you would qualify for here.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that's the only option.
Okay, fair enough. I just, I'm just flabbergasted. For the record, I've seen Worcester and Shrewsbury in action, something like this. They'd say it doesn't qualify next.
Yeah.
Okay? I'm going out of my way here.
Yeah, I know.
To find a way to get you what you want.
I appreciate it. I just.
Alright, so I, 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 I think you are entitled to what you want.
Right.
But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sacrifice the integrity of this board or this decision.
Absolutely.
To, right, to get there. Now, getting back to A ten says, work with me here for a minute.
I'm work, always work.
I know you. Alright, A ten says, no additional housing units or bedrooms or any other structures or infrastructure except that which is shown on the approved plan shall be created without further approval, right? That which is shown on the approved plans. I've got a Brigham four-bedroom in the approved plans. He wants to build a Brigham four-bedroom.
You also have a Brigham three-bedroom.
Well, that's nice.
Hey.
But, but I mean, this is.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, he wants to do something that's on the approved plans.
And Bill, read the next sentence.
It's not just an approved, it's as-built.
You go on, it says unless.
Whoa.
Approved by, you know.
Wait.
Approved by ZBA in the form of an amendment.
Without further approval of the ZBA in the form of an amendment to this decision.
Right.
So they can't do that.
Yeah, they can't do that.
We, it's too late to do that. Eastland.
We can't say we're allowing him to admit, we can't amend this for him to do this.
Right, not now.
Okay.
East, Eastland would have.
Got you.
So, Mr. Yellen.
When they came before us, when Eastland came before us in two thousand nineteen in February, they make the statement when they changed from their original plan to the bedroom on the first floor, I think that was when they sought a, a change. And they make the statement in that letter, the new styles of floor plans are consistent in square footage and bedroom count. See the attached exhibit. So they're dealing with a bedroom count.
Right.
I don't have the luxury of that piece of information of a bedroom count.
And it's not, you know, and some, some of our comprehensive permits have said, you know, there'll be twenty, you know, type As, three bedrooms. There'll be thirty type Bs, four bedrooms, whatever. And, and you can, it's a table. I've seen it in some of them and you can, it's, it's right there and plain. I, I haven't gone and looked at this comprehensive permit. I wouldn't be surprised if that's not in there. And if that's, if that's the case, I think, I don't think, I don't think we're really stretching all that much to say he wants to do a Brigham four-bedroom.
That's the only chart we have.
And that doesn't give numbers.
No.
It just, and, and, and I don't even know if this is part of the per, the.
This was part.
That's the original.
This was part when he came in with the change for the letters.
So that's just a letter. That's not necessarily what's in the permit.
Yeah, and I looked through the permit. The only thing I found in the permit was what I gave you guys and what I highlighted. That was, because I, I looked for him before I, you know, I mean, I did. I, I did as much as I could to try. And this is all I found.
You know, I, I think if he wanted to knock the house down and put up something entirely different.
That'd be a problem.
I, I think that might be a problem.
Right.
I.
Ms. Pizzwoss, did you have a comment, question?
I, I, I did. I'm, I'm still trying to think through some of this, so I put my hand back down. I might circle back.
I, I don't know, Bob, I'm, I'm.
I brought it to the board. I'm, I'm listening to the board.
Yeah.
Um, the board has an option of, of overturning my opinion and, and ordering me to issue the permit once it, once it, um, goes through plan review. I don't have a problem with that either. But I, what I do want is I want us to think about this on the next forty B project that we have. And we really have to clarify, if you want to have a bedroom count, then let's put in the decision somewhere a total bedroom count. Because that'll take away a little of the confusion that's happening right now.
And I, you know, I, I think in the multifamily forty Bs, it's there. I, I wouldn't be surprised if it's not in, in this one and, um, and I, I can almost envision why it wouldn't necessarily be in it. Alright, let's put, I can flip it around. I can definitely see why in the multifamilies it would be there.
Yeah.
You, you really do want especially how many three-bedroom apartments or four-bedroom, you know, um.
And on the septic systems, I could high point.
Well, definitely what you, now, well, now you got Title V kicking, right?
Right.
So, so that.
Because this is sewer and water.
Right.
Yeah, so that's, that's not an issue. I, you know, I, I would like, I, I would like to continue this just so we can make sure we're doing this right. I mean, I don't know how, you're, you're anxious to go, right?
Well, I've been, we've been.
We submitted everything on April fifth.
Yep, and I got, no, no offense, but my parents aren't getting any younger. I mean, my, my dad's eighty-one, my mom's seventy-seven. I was hoping to have this done this summer for them to come visit. I don't know how many more years I've got with them to be mobile. I mean, and if you're gonna, if we're gonna pet, push this off again, I mean, then I can't, and I can't build and I, or I can't finish a room and then I can't have them stay over once in a while? I mean, that's, to me, that's a, it's, you know.
Shouldn't be that far out, though.
Um, Metali?
So, I, I'm just wondering, un- under the deed, is Elmerock Estates subject to a master declaration? Are there any restrictions in there with respect to the number of uh, bedrooms that you can have?
So, so Metali, I, I think that the compre- I think that the deed ties, is tied somehow to the comprehensive permit itself. That's why I was looking at the comprehensive permit. I, I, I would be a little surprised if there's anything in the deed or the deed writer that talks to bedrooms.
No, th- sorry, so there's nothing in the deed itself that says you can have three or four bedrooms? But the, but the property is conveyed subject to a master declaration of protective covenants and it's considered the master declaration. And so I'm just wondering if there is anything in there similar to how you would have maybe a condo master deed um, that would say this unit, this, um, this single-family home is a unit part of this larger, uh, complex if that unit has a set number of rooms? And I'm just wondering if that's something anybody knows. It might not even be relevant. I'm just curious, I guess.
I, I, I don't know the answer to that question. I've always considered and, and I, I, I don't know, but I've always considered that what you're referring to essentially, somehow the comprehensive permit is what gets referenced. Um, or tied to it or, or what have you. That's, I've always gone to the comprehensive permit itself. Now, you know, maybe there's more or something different. I, I don't know.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Reed.
Um, is there anything on the original plans that showed each house it was being built and three-bedroom, four, I mean, so there's nothing that says?
I looked. Katrina's looking at the plans now.
Because if the builder built a four-bedroom and he just said, I don't want to pay for it right now, it seems like that house was meant to be a four-bedroom. Kind of.
But we're, we're, we're just assuming all of this right now.
But it was built with that space, but it just wasn't finished.
You have two plans, one with the four.
Right.
And one with just unfinished.
Well, you had to have two plans. You couldn't just build the fourth without, you had to have the drawings, the plans made up.
These.
Were the three bedrooms, did the three bedrooms have an, also an, just an unfinished space attached to the three bedrooms?
You have it on my zoning determination. That's right here.
Okay, alright.
So if I have a bathroom.
He's got this. He wants this.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Other Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's old hat, old habits. Depends on the meeting.
I, I would, I'd like to have a conversation with Dan Hill about this.
Well.
If, if you, if you would let me do that, go that path, and if you don't, then that's fine.
Well, I would ask the applicant, um, have you spoken to an attorney about this? Because it, you have?
Yeah, but they told me that I just need to go through the process.
Mm-hmm.
Normal process and just go with the flow, which I'm doing.
Well, but what I.
I don't feel, do I, do I, why do I have to pay an attorney to get involved with this? This is a simple, to me, this is a very simple thing.
To you it is. I, I, but it's not legally.
The house is there. The room is there. I'm looking at a piece of plywood right now that's got four screws. All I want to do is take those four screws out.
And it, I mean, don't, I don't think you should take our discussion of this issue as being unsympathetic to that.
I know, no, I get it. I, I get it.
But we have to.
I know you guys are, guys are doing the laws, but, uh, to be honest, I'm sorry. I, I thought that would have been done for this. I thought you guys, I thought you, you guys would have talked a little bit more in that tonight would come here.
They can't. By law, they can't discuss.
It's a public meeting.
Then we'd have an open meeting law violation.
True, okay, fair, fair enough. I just, I just, I just, so where do I go from here? I gotta hire an attorney and pay him? No, okay.
I, did I say that? No?
No, I, no, no. But what, an attorney could come back and potentially Dan Hill could do this and, you know, validate exactly what Mr. McCusker suggested, that really no action needs to be taken. And then you'd be done, you know, but it's.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we need to, I think we need to, I, I, I would like to double-check the, the whole permit, not that others haven't, but I, I personally would like to quick gather through it. Um, I do think that we should talk to Dan briefly and, and get his opinion on this as well.
And we're gonna see him tomorrow night.
And we're, yeah, I mean, you know, he's probably gonna wanna have a little bit of time to look at this as well.
I can.
You know, I, I, I know that you're anxious, but, you know, I think we need to do it right.
I know you have to do it right. I just, I'm just.
I know you're frustrated.
I'm, I'm not fr- I'm not frustrated, I'm surprised.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, it's.
Because I'm surprised with Eastland, that they didn't make this, that they, you know, that they didn't.
Yeah.
That what, I'm surprised what they said. I'm not surprised. I understand there's laws and rules. I just, I'm sorry I get so animated. I just.
Eastland will be at the library tomorrow night.
But it's my house.
Seriously, Eastland will be at the library tomorrow night when I talk to them.
If we continue this to two weeks, it's Eastland too. The twenty-ninth.
Let's do that. I, I, you know, and we, I forgot we had a meeting in two weeks. Why don't we continue this to that meeting?
We have another meeting in, on the twenty-ninth, and we would have you first. I, we can get ahold of our forty B attorney. I can send him everything and get clarification.
Well, can I get a clarification of what he's gonna say before that meeting? So I'm not blindsided, so I can, if I have to get my attorney to come here, then I will, but I just.
Sure, if we have a document.
If I get something in writing, yeah, because it'll become public record.
Public record, yeah. Because I just don't feel like paying an attorney.
I understand.
And if, and if everything goes well, and the, and the attorney says this is a, um, by right?
Mm-hmm.
Then you, we, then that's it. It goes away.
You just submit me a letter saying withdraw without prejudice and we're done.
Wouldn't, I don't think he would withdraw. It's by right.
If it's by right, then just.
These, they overturned me.
And then you would grant, then we would grant it.
And not talk to you guys.
Well, no, we wouldn't grant, we wouldn't grant the variance. We would overturn.
Overturn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Reverse your decision, basically.
Yeah.
And when that, would he have to come back?
No.
No, we could just say it's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, because then Bob has, can issue the permit or do what he needs to do.
I think that's the way to go.
Yeah, okay.
And how long would it take to issue that permit? Well, that's another, that's an, that's another topic. But you have had it since April fifth, Bob. Yeah, I know, but that's, that's another topic, not, not for here.
So, um.
Make motion.
I, I, well, technically you have to request a, a continuance, um. Actually, I guess he doesn't. We can just continue. We're not asking for extended time. We're still within the time window. Uh, we're only going two weeks. What do you got right there?
I, but that's, I'm looking at the waivers right now. That's what I'm trying to see if there's anything in here.
Good.
Um, I'm still looking.
Yeah, um.
Mr. Chair, he would like to.
Ms. Morrow.
With the forty B projects.
Neiman.
Oh, John Morrow, fifty-four Pleasant Street. With, again, single-family homes, different animal than the multifamily. The affordable units over there in Elmerock, are those in perpetuity? So could, if somebody had the space, could they add, again, would this set precedence? Um, that's what I'm concerned with, with these forty B projects. Again, if there is an account, what happens to the affordable unit if somebody has a three-bedroom but they have the fourth space? What do they do?
My, my guess is.
I don't think it's any different.
No, it's, it wouldn't be any different.
It shouldn't be any different, and here's why. Why is it, to my opinion, why, what if they, what if they did better in life? What if they got a promotion? What if they have more money now? That's what the forty B, that's what it's all about.
No, there's still a deed writer on the property.
Yeah, they can't change.
And they can't also, the other thing is they can't go and sell that house for
No.
market value.
Correct. It's, it stays affordable in perpetuity.
So they, so technically.
But it's a different issue as to whether there's any restriction on.
I understand. I think that's what Mr. Hill's gonna have to clarify, whether or not that was, and I know where you're coming from. I just, I just worry that we set a precedence then that single family, oh, can they finish the basements on the, um, the affordables?
Well, you see, I think that's, so, okay, what you just said there, finish the basement into a bedroom. I'm not gonna, I don't think I'm gonna find a print like I did for, for this situation.
Right.
So I think that would be a no. In thi- in this case, what, what he's asking to do is basically move from one approved plan to another.
I understand. But again, I, I, it, it is a cloudy.
It is. It absolutely is, and that's why, that's why I'm like, Dan, you're being followed.
I understand.
The other thing is, with respect to the affordables, how much is this bedroom gonna cost you to finish? You said it was, you saved thirty, so you gotta be spending at least thirty.
Spending almost.
Yeah.
Save it. I'm, I'm pretty much paying like, what, thirty-five thousand?
Okay.
Right.
So thirty thousand to finish a bedroom, the increase in, in, in affordable sales price from three bedrooms to four bedrooms is not thirty thousand dollars.
No.
It's not even close.
No.
So if somebody actually did that, they would be losing money. So if you bought an affordable three-bedroom, you paid X, when you sell it as a four-bedroom, you're not gonna recoup your money.
I'm not sure if people know that. But, but again, that's, that's.
Well, anyone who bought an affordable should know that they have to sell it at a set price.
There's a maximum sales price.
Those stipulations should have been pretty set.
Yeah, I think they are. I think they are.
Yeah, I, I, like I said, I think, I think that this is where we're finding these, these little inconsistencies in these law, in this law. Okay, thank you.
Bill, question of Mr. McCusker. Did we not deny a, a bedroom permit?
You did.
In this.
He, he'll tell you. I, I forgot it. He, he remembers.
On Milf, on Milford Road, that forty B project.
And also up at High Point, they were gonna add a.
That, that was High Point, not this, yeah.
Five-bedroom septic, but the comprehensive permit specifically said the houses can have no more bedrooms.
We denied the additional bedroom. That was, uh, that was High Point.
That was ninety-eight High Point.
Ninety-eight. You remember that well.
But, but apparently we did one at Hilltop as well.
You did one at Hilltop because they have that other room that is an office that they wanted to close in and make. You did one at Hilltop because they have that other room that is an office that they wanted to close in and make.
Well, actually, now I do remember that one. But, but Hilltop had a very, it had a list of X units and exactly what they're supposed to be.
And which ones had, because I've now gone in and updated every single one of those as to which one was approved to have an extra bedroom.
Yep.
That's why I really think this has to just have a fast look through Dan, so Dan can give us the right path to go by.
Yep.
And it's two weeks. It's next, it's Thursday, the twenty ninth. And if, if we find out that you can have it by right, then I will send you something and we're done. If I need you to come back, cuz we need to do something, then I will let you know.
Let's do a hypothetical. What's stopping me from having a bonus space finished off with no door?
Well, I.
That's me.
Yeah.
That's, you know, we get into the point where it looks like a duck, it walks like a duck, it's a duck.
I'm just saying, though.
I know, but that, but I also have people out in Grafton that wanna finish their basement and call it finished storage.
Right.
But it, you know, it looks like a media room with a projector.
I got you.
Let's just leave it at that.
So I couldn't even do that?
That'll be further discussion, not in, in this venue.
I just want, that's aside with it.
Um.
Any further comments, questions from the board? Any other further?
Just a comment, just to clarify, uh, we do not discuss the cases before they're presented in this room.
I, I, I.
The, the, the length of time
Yeah, I.
that it goes through, it goes through, because we don't have the backroom discussion.
Yeah, I understand.
And say, let's, let's meet and decide this. It's not the way it works.
I got you.
So appreciate that.
You hack a lot easier that way, but. Yeah, um, so I move that we continue case number, looks like now we do ZB eight nine seven?
Yeah, cuz it's all in.
Yeah, so I, uh, move we, we, uh, continue case number ZB eight nine seven to, or when, when do we continue with it? What's?
Six twenty nine. Twenty nine.
So moved?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Do roll call vote, Mister McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mister Yeomans?
Yes.
Mister Pizwos? Chairman votes yes. Case continued to June twenty ninth at seven P M.
So it will be here.
Okay.
Um, just so you know, but if something happens, I will get ahold of you.
Okay.
Okay?
Bob, do you wanna reach out to Dan or you want me to reach out to Dan? Um.